Good evening and welcome to the Monday November fifth, which is the school board work session. Madam Kirk, may I call a meeting to order?
For the board members who are present, please respond. Ms. Thorpe, Mr. Barlow, Mrs. Gibson?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Here.
Dr. Sapien?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
You have a call on Madam Chair, your interpreter.
Uh, for the purpose, uh, Scotty, may I say that, if I were, that I'm just a man? Well, after you know, we have sixty-two reporters today at the London Schools and the parent teaching conferences. And will be here tomorrow or something?
Gracias, thank you. And also, for the record, Mr. Barlow will be late due to work obligation. And also, we'd like to extend her notices to this floor's following law, the passing of the following law. And she would not be following us as well. Thanks, Ito.
The next item is one point zero two, adoption of the agenda. Agenda has two amendments. Uh, to remove legal and students from the closed session. I don't have any other changes. Who is your pleasure, Madam Chair?
Need a motion? It's been moved by the senior and seconded by Ms. Burke to amend the agenda as received. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing that we have none, the motion has been approved. The agenda is on and has been amended as received.
The next item in the agenda is one point zero three, approve the minutes of the October fifteenth, two thousand eighteen meeting. I believe those minutes did go out to you. For your review earlier, I have not received any edits or changes at this time.
At this time, need a motion? For the adopted minutes, second? Thank you. It's been moved by Miss Orne and seconded by Ms. Burke to adopt the minutes as received. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing that we have none, the minutes have been adopted.
The next item is item two, public information. I have one speaker who signed up in advance. Please your question.
Person who has signed up. And if we have members in the audience that would like to come forward at this time, if you're speaking as an individual, you have three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of an organization, you have five minutes, and we ask that you come forward at this time.
Carolyn Smith? Carolyn Smith? And those people who signed up.
Evening ladies and gentlemen, and it's the Jones, President of Jones Foundation. I just wanted to take this time to personally invite you to the Second Annual City Summit, which will be held at Thomas Jefferson High School next, oh, next Saturday, November seventh, at one o'clock. We will have Mayor Stone, Chief, Dr. Ham, hopefully, France, if you can, if you schedule a superintendent, France will just schedule a live announcement. We will have someone representing from RBS and guest speakers. Um, each young man will receive gifts and a lunch from, uh, a local western line in our city. Uh, we just wanted to, to show these young men a different light, a different way, something off the field. Um, after, by the having lunch, each young man will be able to sign for SATs and ACT testing and, uh, some, some couples are our favorites, they will be able to do too. Um, each young man will receive next, uh, uh, this is something that we just feel like at age fourteen, eighteen years, that's a, that's a, in our city, that's a group that's, that's, that's lacking some attention. So, off the field, you know, we get a penitentiary honor field, so off the field, we'd like to let you all, to experience something, that you see something. And, um, our ladies will be, of course, up next and be some of them, so, I just want a person to like, thank you all.
Thank you. If we do not have any others in the audience at this time that would like to come forward, this includes, uh, public information here.
The next item is, uh, item three, the business, three point zero one, discuss the scope of the school health advisory board.
Board members, if you remember, at the last work session, we approved to reinstate the committee for the health, school health advisory board. So at this time, we would like to talk about the scope or lay out the scope of this committee. And I know the superintendent shared at that time, we agreed to, that the focus of the health advisory committee, we focus on two items that are part of the strategic plan.
Which are, making sure we have nursing services in all of our schools, and making sure that we improve, uh, the nutritional value and student satisfaction with our meals.
So we know.
And, third item, which I apologize for neglecting, was increasing our mental health capacity at our schools, also in our strategic plan. So those three seem like a very good place to start.
And so, just to, with, to emphasize, what the superintendent just said, keeping the scope of this school health advisory board. The focus should be more on making sure that we have nurses in every city, excuse me. Nutrition, as far as our meals for students, and three, mental health support for our students. So, when we talk about mental health support, are we talking about school psychologists, social workers?
Uh, yes, and part of that work will be doing an assessment of what all of the existing roles in our schools, um, are doing now, and trying to figure out what are some areas that we need to enhance beyond that.
And also, if I could just add one other thing, I see this as a partnership, a partnership of, um, um, health, um, medical facilities such as VCU Health System, um, students who are in the process of completing or have to complete internship hours, that they have to satisfy in social work, as well as school psychologists. So I see that as a strong support partnership with the schools. And this committee probably wants to know. And recommendations from the committee will come forward to the board. It's, um, to report out to the board, one, to report out to the board, and two, any recommendations once you want forward to the board, for, for the board to approve. Any other concerns, questions, Ms. Young?
Just a brief question, process, another process question. Do you want to invite each of us to submit recommendations, certain who's, uh, going to be considered for the board? Or, I'm unsure of what the process is for appoint persons, or if we've made that decision yet, or haven't made that decision? Yes. We'll, we'll have an application process for it, so, yes, if you do that.
Question declared. So the application process to, um, to include members to be on the committee? So do we have, I guess, a leading question, they'll come back and report to the board. Are we looking at application process, are we looking at two students, two parent representatives, two, two public professionals? What does the committee consist of?
Committee consists of, uh, parents, students, um, who have, uh, about two students, uh, both professionals and those who have a, a strong interest in, uh, supporting the school system, if you have a doubt.
Is there a number, max number?
Max number of twenty-five.
So, for, yeah, recommendations lies to so. And with one last question, the committee, do we have a time frame based on achieving or reaching the goals of the committee?
The goal? The goal is to, uh, start our agenda, board agenda.
General?
Right. So, we're looking to receive the application, go through and so on, and make the selections, and then begin generating.
So recommendations will come back to the board, or, board, board of board?
Right.
Thanks, Ito.
The next item is three point zero two, receive reports from board members on external community award assignments and conferences attended.
Well, Ms. Page and I had an excellent time in Baltimore at the Council of the Great City Schools Conference. And I have a set like this of notes and handouts and booklets. So, I'll get you a more comprehensive report later, but I will say that, um, I went to several on special education, um, collaboration, um, several on, um, how do you attract, retain, train great principals? Um, those, those were kind of my two focuses, both, both, uh, um, but we talked a lot, we were inspired a lot, and we're also depressed a lot over our lack of ability to, to reach the heights that we saw in a lot of situations.
I look forward to attending the Council of Great City Schools Conference, uh, in the future, as I have in the past, representing all of the amazing things that we are going to be doing at RFP.
At March, at March, in December, for many different.
And just to add what this Orne said, it was a lot. So, those, the two areas that she focused on, and I attended the sessions, it was data, data, data. Um, also, I was a facilitator, and I attended sessions dealing with pre-K and early childhood, so the early learners. And we saw some school districts that are making great strides, but what was the bright light? Some of the initiatives that our superintendent has put in place, focusing on the early learning, um, I
online.
Yes. Yes, so, I know we on the right track, um, I know we didn't get like this overnight. So I know it's going to take some time to get things right, but feel confident that we are moving in the right direction. Um, and what we did recognize, that the issues in Richmond Public Schools are the same issues that a lot of urban school, a lot of urban school districts throughout the country, they are facing. They are facing the lack of funding, they are facing challenges, and I don't like to say challenges, I like to call them opportunities to do better. But making sure that those resources are in place, making sure resources is released to trauma, trauma-informed care, the mental health support, making sure that we have counselors in our schools, making sure that we have social workers, s- school psychologists, making sure that those resources are there. And without those resources, and we know those resources aren't being, a lot of time is attached to the, to the resources. But, um, so what we are dealing with in Richmond Public Schools, met a board member from Anchorage, Alaska. And the comments she made, I thought she was talking about Richmond Public Schools. That board members in Florida, I mean, just all over the country, didn't make the building better, but, um, it's not unique just to Richmond. So, we have a lot of work to do. Oh, but one thing I do want to, um, want to mention, the common theme was to keep student achievement in the forefront. In every decision that we make, in every action, our focus, we have to be intentional, and the student achievement must remain in the forefront. That's all we should be focusing on, because that's our responsibility, student achievement. Making sure that our students get everything that they deserve and more. Making sure they receive a quality education, and making sure that when they leave from the schools, they are college and real ready. For making sure, again, I just can't stress enough, student achievement. Nothing else matters, but student achievement. It's not about us, it's about our young people, the students of Richmond Public Schools. And I have lots of materials to share with you as well, and administration, but it was a really good conference. Ms. Young?
Thank you. Just real briefly, this Thursday, November the eighth, at two P M, the search committee at Appomattox Regional Governor's School is going to present a candidate, one candidate for the entire board's consideration relative to the new executive director position. Uh, somebody, uh, obviously I can't announce yet, I think that person will be, but I am very excited, as, uh, as were all the other persons on the search committee. So it'll be, uh, this Thursday at two P M, and if my colleagues and the board, uh, agree with the search committee's recommendation, we'll have the new executive director. As a reminder, we have ninety-eight students at, uh, Appomattox. Thank you.
October twenty-second, I attended the Title IX workshop at GSBA, and it was extremely enlightening, uh, impact that's obviously one of the major aspects of any, uh, school system, along with the various, um, issues that happen with students or teachers of any that nature. Um, I just want to make sure, obviously, that we have a system of compliance, um, that that's very, very important. I have, uh, a paperback packet which should be on board docs, or will be, uh, to, uh, as you hear, thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Ito. The next item is item four, administration business, four point zero one, receiving joint construction team update.
I'll be providing the update tonight. Uh, unfortunately, Mr. Simmons, uh, has caught his son's cold, and so he's getting some rest this evening. Uh, I'm very excited to report that the RFP for the construction, uh, firm is now on the street, and bids are due on November twenty-first. Um, and so there will be a lot of exciting reading over Thanksgiving, uh, so that we can, uh, make a decision, and then be ready to hopefully, uh, break ground, uh, by the end of the year, if not the start of the next year. Um, we are also in the process of putting together, um, some signage to put out the three sites, to, uh, let folks know that the work is going to be starting, and, um, and to celebrate the development of three brand-new schools. And with that, I will call up our friends and colleagues from the city, um, specifically from the minority business development, uh, organization, to, uh, share a little bit about the work they are doing to achieve a high percentage of minority business involvement.
Good evening, I'm Pat Foster, I'm the Director of Minority Business Development for the City of Richmond. And first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here. Uh, just to know that you're interested in supporting minority business is a big deal to me. We don't often get that type of support, so very much want to thank you for that. Um, we have put on there, there was an RFQ, and some of this information you probably already know, there was a forty percent minority participation goal, which is very good. Uh, last time we did, uh, school projects, we did anywhere between thirty and thirty-three percent, so we have increased that amount a little bit to make that happen, and we made that. Those, those were the actual goals that we actually made, is thirty to thirty-three percent on the various four schools. Uh, we are doing some of the same things we've done before that, that was proven successful. Uh, we do outreach, we have a meeting greet on this Thursday, many of you would love to be there at the Public Library from six to seven-thirty. Where we have invited the prime, the people that have put in proposals, the primes, to come out so that they can meet and greet some of the subcontractors that would be interested in, uh, working with them to make that minority participation possible. Uh, we have, uh, we feel pretty good about that, because along with the meeting greet, we have expanded our, um, database. We have more minorities, which makes it a little bit easier, when you, the more you have, the better it is. Not only have we increased the number, we've increased the, uh, the capacity of those businesses that are coming. Uh, so we're going to have some real good people that we'll be able to work with and develop. That goes back to what we're talking about as far as technical assistance. Uh, some of the barriers that minority businesses have would be in bonding and sometime having capital. So we have a micro loan program that we will be working with businesses on to help them along with our cap loan program, uh, to help them and make sure we have capacity. Our department is there to help build that capacity. Now, not only do we do it in financing, but we also do it in, uh, in experience. We give them, uh, we come in and we can help teach them different things, we work with other businesses to help them get the experience of doing it. So as it relates to making the minority participation, I feel very good about that. I don't think that's going to be a problem at all. Uh, we have reached out to other sister organizations to make sure that they are all aware of what we're doing, and we are working with them as well to get to what we need to do. In order to make sure that we meet the, uh, goal, we have compliance reports that we will be doing, we do that on a monthly basis. So we won't get to the end and find out we're not making our participation. We'll be knowing on a regular basis what's going on. We do, and we call that desktop monitoring, but we also do field monitoring, which makes, which means we go out and make sure that minorities are doing the work that they are getting paid to do, and they are not using it as a pass tool, just giving us, uh, lip service or paperwork. So again, I feel very comfortable about what I think we're going to be able to accomplish, and I think you should as well. But if you have any other questions, I would love to address them at this time.
Ms. Burke?
Thank you so much, Ms. Foster. It is so important that we do have minority, um, input, minority businesses involved, with just, uh, having George Mason built in the East End is, is, I'm delighted to hear that. Knowing the population of our city, and just hearing at different community meetings throughout the city, the lack of, um, so much construction is one of the cities of Richmond. But the lack of minorities being able to bid or be a top one, be so, thank you so very much for sharing that, it's so important. Now, children, you can see that as well, so I'm glad that, I wish it could be sixty percent, but, um, forty?
We're working on it.
Okay, I don't know, but thank you, this is very important, as of before, we're going back to the seventh district and share this.
Okay, and, and one thing, one other thing I want to stress just before I take my seat. Uh, the administration is very, very active in making sure that we have minority participation. One of the issues we've had previously that we were not at the table early enough to make a difference, this administration is making sure that happens now. So, I feel, just like I said before, I feel very good about what's going on.
Ms. Orne?
Just out of curiosity, since, um, two of these are going to be built up in Southside, do we have outreach in Hispanic businesses over there, or there?
Yes, we do, we work with the Hispanic, uh, chamber as well.
Okay, good, thank you.
Ms. Foster, I do have a question. So the lessons learned from the last four schools that were built, and I, um, heard you said several initiatives, things that you are doing differently this time, and, um, to feel, because the last time you say it was thirty to thirty-three percent, and you feel confident you'll be able to reach to forty percent?
Yes.
So are we looking at not only our ten old families, but members that live in the community as far as, you know, being able to qualify some of the subcontracting work? Because we know poverty in the city of Richmond is a huge, huge issue, and...
Yes, we, again, part of what we do is we also work with the Department of Community Wealth Building. Our department is very conscious of the poverty and the unemployment in the, particularly in the African-American neighborhoods. And so we are very sensitive of doing whatever we can do to make sure we have reduced those numbers. Thank you, and again, thank you for your support and your interest in making sure that minority participation is being taken care of.
Thank you.
The next item is four point zero three, receiving update on student attendance.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Superintendent Cameras. I am very delighted to give you an update on our current student attendance data. As you know, we are focused on reducing chronic absenteeism. By definition, chronic absenteeism occurs when a student misses ten percent or more of the school year, regardless of the type of absence. For us, this equates to a student being absent eighteen or more days of school. Also, chronic absenteeism is now a school quality indicator that is part of accreditation. So if we want our schools to reach level-one indicator, we must ensure that our schools do not have a chronic absenteeism rate that is greater than fifteen percent of their student population. The data I'm presenting today compares student attendance for the first forty days of school last year against student attendance for the first forty days of school this year. And I am delighted to report that our chronic absenteeism rate has dropped two percent. Last year was at sixteen percent. Currently, as of last Thursday, it was at fourteen percent, which means that approximately five hundred and eighty more of our students are attending school more often than they did last year. However, we still have a great deal of work to do. But as you look at the pie chart, you'll notice that the attendance data is tiered. Of course, we want all of our students to be in green. As of last Thursday, students who were in green missed between zero days of school to three days of school. Tier two, which is the yellow section, means that students currently have between four days to eight days of absences. And our students who are in the red, those students have already accumulated eight or more, excuse me, greater than eight absences. By tearing the attendance data, we can look for opportunities. For example, for example, let's look at the students in the yellow. As of last Thursday, we had two thousand six hundred and twenty-three students. These students come to school, they're in our schools. We just need them to come to school more frequently. On average, these students are missing between two to three days a month. If we can get these students to reduce their absence, absences by at least one day per month, we can move all of those students, or most of those students into the green. But with our students in the red right now, we have six hundred and eighty-three. And that's more difficult to address because a lot of these students, for many reasons, are actually not coming to school. But we've identified key challenges, which I'll share during this presentation. But before we move forward, I'd like to highlight some notable reductions in chronic absenteeism. And all this confirmation is found in the appendix. It's our middle and high schools that are leading the charge in the reduction of chronic absenteeism. Four of our five comprehensive high schools have reduced chronic absenteeism by three percent or greater, with George Smith having reduced their chronic absenteeism rate by six percent. Five of our seven middle schools have a three percent or greater decrease in chronic absenteeism, with Martin Luther King Junior having reduced this number by thirteen percent. And K is just one of three schools to reduce chronic absenteeism by more than ten percent. Overbeat Shepherd decreased chronic absenteeism by twelve percent. And our Richmond Alternative School decreased chronic absenteeism by twenty-four percent in the first forty days of school. In fact, twenty-six of our forty-two schools, which is sixty-two percent of our schools, have reduced chronic absenteeism by at least one percent. I attribute these reductions to a few key levers. One is having the principals themselves facilitate the attendance meetings. And having their attendance meeting, attendance members to ensure they need document and maintain a spreadsheet that details why students are absent and what the school is doing to address those absences. I also have access to those spreadsheets, and I make sure that I follow up with principals about individual students pretty frequently. Additionally, principals and their teams have implemented numerous strategies aimed at celebrating great attendance and reducing chronic absenteeism. We have N B A clubs, never been absent, and other school efforts that recognize students for great, for great attendance. Further staff members conduct home visits, generate attendance contracts, assign attendance mentors, and have conversations directly with students. At some schools, multiple teachers will call the house when students are absent. Now, the parents don't necessarily like that, but that has also proven to be an effective strategy. Finally, our attendance officers have been required to set goals which are monitored by numerous people. I just want to say publicly that I am very proud of the hard work and the effort that our principals, their attendance team members, our attendance officers, and their teachers have put forth to reduce chronic absenteeism. But we still have a long way to go. And I encourage them all to keep pushing forward because we are headed in the right direction. But if you think about that red percentage, it's a large percent, in my opinion, of our students who are in the red. And we can attribute their absences really to three key areas. First, we need to figure out, first, we need to figure out... First, we need to figure out how to cut down on the time between identifying a student who is in need of transportation because he's been in the mental and actually getting a transportation. The average time to procure transportation for those students right now is around nine school days. So that's nine days of school that a child will be out waiting for transportation. And of course, it is our goal to ultimately reduce suspensions. But right now, we have to figure out how do we also cut down the time between a student receiving a suspension, going in front of a panel hearing, and then being placed back in our home school or placed at an alternative school. That can take anywhere between six, ten days. Right now, we've had eighty-nine students, or excuse me, eighty-three students who have gone up in front of a panel. So if you think eighty-three students, you round that to eighty, let's say seven, let's say on average, those students with seven days out of school waiting on that hearing, that's five hundred and sixty days of obstruction that they've lost. And then finally, we have to consider how do we better engage our students who are overage and undercredited. In some cases, these students seem to have lost hope in getting their education and finishing their education, or perhaps they have other responsibilities because of their age. But this is another thing that we need to look at, which is why it's so important that we determine how to reimagine alternative education. And those really are the three big buckets that attribute to a lot of our students being in the red for chronic absenteeism currently. I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Ms. Yell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, before I have any inquiries, I'd like to begin by sharing that it's difficult to, it's difficult to turn a battleship on a dime, but our team is doing just that, so kudos to both of you and to all of your staff. My question regards, those three, those three groups of persons that you just referenced, do you, as I suspect you do, have an idea for, in fact, you referenced one group and provided a specific number, what percentage of the larger group they constitute?
Yes. So currently, our yellow students represent eleven percent of our total student population.
Oh, I'm sorry. In other words, the students in either the red or the yellow, how many are either homeless students? How many are overage, undercredit, and/or third, third category specifically of students? I think you referenced eighty-three that have been suspended, so I have to do the math, obviously, in the eighty-three. But then the other two categories, and if you don't have that now, that's okay. I'm just trying to assess what the scope, what the scope is.
Yeah, I can actually work on getting you those numbers, as right now I'm tracking students who have missed nine days or more. So hopefully by end of the week, I can tell you what percentage are mentally mental, what percentage are students who have been handled, what percentage are overage, undercredit. But it's, I would be confident to say that it's probably more than fifty percent of our students who are currently in that, that it's one of those three categories.
Ms. O'N?
I know that in the past, we've had issues with children who, excuse me, young people who are in high school who may have children. And for them, there may be issues with childcare. In the past, we've had that. Do you, did you run into any of that sort of difficulty?
Yes, in a few cases, we do have some new ladies who are currently pregnant or have recently given birth who are not coming to school. So it's something that we, we also need to address. I will say that one of our guiding principles when we revised the school board policy was to hold students to high expectations for their attendance, but not to punish them for circumstances outside of their control. So I think one of the reasons it's very important that we continue to track these students. And so when we get to waiver season, and I personally plan to oversee that process myself to ensure fairness and equity and consistency, that we get information on these students now instead of waiting many days, many months down the road.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you for this. My, my question is regarding graduation. Since I know we've looked at the policy largely so that we wouldn't run into the circumstance with last year and having to revise it so that we didn't see the impact on graduation. Can you, do you have any numbers in terms of how many students are perhaps already been flagged as not being able to graduate due to the not meeting the policy? And how does, and what is being, what is happening regarding those students? And then, you know, how does that look this year versus last year?
Great questions. I'm pretty sure I can give you the data on the first question by end of the week. I'm not sure how they compare this to last year, but it'll take us some time to determine that, but we can start the process. I am worried. I am worried. We do have a number of seniors who are on pace to have forty, fifty, sixty absences in good consciousness. I cannot allow those students to graduate. We have to look at our summer school options. We have to take each student on a case-by-case basis and try to determine why they are missing so much school. But I do worry that it will have an impact on graduation rate. I also worry that it will have some impact on our retention rates in ninth, tenth, eleventh grade.
Excuse me, Ms. Hughes. Thank you for this information. But my question, and I'm not sure if you mentioned it already, but a threshold. But I know I heard you say about the nine days. Before our students even get to nine days, if you see a parent two to three days.
Yes.
You know, so what's that threshold? Be strong, contacting the home and getting the parents involved. How can you help us get your child to come to school?
I would say the greater majority of our principals have been pretty proactive and responding quickly, not waiting to get to five days or ten days before they're sent to life of intervention. In certain cases also, I've been able to prompt the principal based on studies, student attendance of individual students over the course of the week, prompt them to action. But I am, I am pleased with where we are in terms of our principals' actions and the actions of their attendance team members. And I think we intervene pretty quickly. In some cases, we are just dealing with some stories, to be honest with you, that are heartbreaking, that are disturbing. Some kids we simply right now just can't find. We've gone to the door, we've called, we've visited the house numerous times, and we've looked in windows, and one of them is missing. And we just have some cases where we're trying to get ahead of that. But like, we're dealing with some real, some real life, social, emotional, economic issues that in some cases are really preventing our children from coming to school. And in many cases, I actually believe that these children want to come to school. But we also have some issues in the home with family members who may have their own issues to deal with.
If I could just, this is why the Comvisit program, which we'll be starting in the spring, is so important to make sure we have a strong connection as we possibly can with our families, understanding what the unique circumstances and situations are so we can connect them with other city supports, R P S supports. I firmly believe that once that work takes off, it will have a dramatic impact on getting kids to school. And so all of these things are actually very much interrelated. Obviously, it's going to take some time to get all of these things up and running, but I do think they'll have a profound impact.
Thank you. One thing I would just like to add, in attending the conference, the Council raised in school, there were several school districts that talked about involving the parents, making the home visit, really connecting with the home, and getting guidance to my parents. Because so oftentimes, we leave them out of the equation. So that's when I made the comment, I know it will be in the right direction. Because there were, there was a lot of school districts that talked about including the parents in the home business. And as far as making some gains. Thank you. Ms. Burke and Ms. Yell?
I know everyone here knows this, but this is so important while we address the management. So important, because a lot of this happens in reflection as we're sitting here. We want the parents to be involved, but oftentimes, they have a lot going on as well. Sometimes our students have to carry some of our parents, they suppose siblings. So with that, that mental health piece, that health advisory committee overall would connect directly with the attendance piece, which is going to take time. But at least that would give us some means of connecting. Once we address that of the health piece, piece overall, it will automatically come back to, it's a lot going on in our communities. A lot going on, a lot. So that's, that's, they connect as well as the home business. It's important. It's important. Can't stress that enough. But thank you for what you are doing with the data. I'm not totally happy about everything I see for a couple of my schools, but we're going to get there together. but we want to get there together.
And if you all actually would like to explore attendance data at any of your schools individually, please let me know, and I'm confident that I can help you see the stories of these young folks.
Ms. Danielle?
Yeah, I was really pleased the Superintendent brought for me this slide. It was one of the most exciting things in our strategic plan for me, one of the four items that I'm most excited about, specifically the home visits. Do we have, do we have an idea of adoption of that action item? Are you prepared to speak to that? And if not, it's okay, we can do that in no time. We're just excited to see execution of that, that strategic plan. The plan at this point is to start a pilot in the spring and to then learn from that and expand the following year and then go from there. So Dr. Harris will be more than happy to share more information on that as we get a little bit further into the year. I will say, there are a number of schools, a number of teachers who already do this work. But we want to make sure that we plan carefully as we expand this across the school system. So we also want to learn from and leverage the educators who are already doing this work so that we can craft a program that is an RPS program while we learn from the best around the country.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
The next item is item five, legislature action, stat point one. We want us to receive a quarterly financial statement from the Kansas County Schools and Schools. Those documents were on board base. They were also shared with Ms. Flagg and Mr. Simmons in the case they had some questions open to solve. The next item is item six, board action. Six point zero one is to receive for action, a pilot P-card initiative.
I'm back to finish it for Darren. We're very excited to bring to you for consideration a pilot P-card program, which in essence will allow a much more expeditious process for small purchases. We have learned quite a bit from the city's P-card program, and we are excited to launch a program here at RPS. I want to draw everyone's attention, touch if we go to the second slide, to this exciting bit of data which was gleaned from the Council for City Schools audit. From July of seventeen to June of eighteen, so over the course of that year, thirteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-three purchase orders were processed for under a thousand dollars, which is typically the threshold for a P-card program. Obviously, that takes a lot of people hours to process all that paperwork and go through all that and all the approvals. If we had used P-cards for these transactions, the estimate, and this is not our estimate, this is based upon the Council for City Schools, that would have saved us about one point four million dollars in labor hours' time spent processing all of these small purchases. So this is a really important step forward to not only help us be more efficient, but save money. And you know how you can get a credit card that has cash back? Well, you can do that with a P-card too. So we actually get a rebate based upon the total spend, which again goes back into RPS to allow us to do even more and to stretch our dollars even more. A lot of other benefits that we can use. One, the one that I'm most excited about is sort of the real-time data recording, which allows us to see what the types of purchases that our schools and our central teams need. I want to assure everyone, there are broad controls in the program to monitor and oversee the purchases, and that is a key concern that most folks have with P-card program. We're using the standard protocols that the city has already adopted to guide us on that front. The idea here is to have a pilot of basically twelve individuals in the school division, and they cross all different parts of the organization to give us good information about how it's working. We're proposing from January of nineteen to June nineteen. And you can see there the pilot group. We have two principals from the elementary, middle, and high school levels, three talent office recruiters, this is particularly helpful when they're out doing events, one member of the facilities team, one member from the community engagement team, and one from the culture, climate, and student services team. And assuming the board approves the pilot, we will take the necessary steps to launch it and then report back and let you know how it's working. And hopefully, we'll be able to scale back going into next year to save us time and money.
I'm hoping that we approve this pilot.
Well, this will move around Ms. O'Nolan and second by Ms. Burke into approving the P-card card power. And this question.
Ms. Danielle?
Well, I could say that this audit finding only validates what some of us have been saying for a long time, or critique of RPS, but I won't. Instead, I'll just again commend our, this commend my colleagues this board in anticipation of our vote along with our new team for being able to accomplish something, specifically saving our students a lot of money that can be better spent in classroom, accomplishing something that preceding boards and preceding administrations clearly were unable to do.
I have a question. So how are we determining, you know, determining, determining the schools' business power?
I would have to speak with Dr. Simmons a little bit more about that. But I think, well, let me not hypothesize. I'll speak with him, and I'm glad to report back to the board on that.
Because I know some schools have more transactions in their student activity forms compared to other schools, so it's one way.
Glad to follow up in the way.
Okay.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes. So a question I have is just regarding the reconciliation process. How can we ensure that, that, you know, I mean, I think that there has to be some type of audit or control just to avoid any type of, just to make sure that all those charges are appropriate?
Yeah, I can't speak to all